Hello, everyone. You're listening to the 805 Uncensored Podcast. This is episode number seventy-nine, hosted by two leftists. We're on Chumashland here in Ventura County. We discuss politics, music, spirituality, and more. And joining us on our show, we've got Liz Campos. Thanks for joining, Liz.
Yeah, anytime.
You want to go ahead and introduce yourself for our listeners real quick?
Yeah, I'm Liz Campos. I'm a West Ventura activist. Actually, I like to say a defender because I defend everything: people, health, human rights, and I'm a member of Ventura City Council, until they attempt to kick me off.
Yeah, so right off the bat, you know, you're kind of known locally for your passion for affordable housing projects and for standing up for marginalized people, I would say. So my question for you right off the bat is, I think the problem with the term affordable housing is that it's kind of subjective. Something that is considered affordable for one person may not be necessarily considered affordable for another. So I'd like to know just kind of like, what is your definition of affordable housing?
Well, you know, affordable is a relative term. It's kind of ambiguous. And I think that if something's going to be affordable, it has to be made affordable to any person. Even if they have no income, there has to be a way they can exchange whatever they have, you know, whatever experience or ability. Like if they're a great gardener, then let them gardener and garden in exchange for it. But the, which is a, you know, problem of capitalism, because housing has become a commodity. And it's so commodified that even in the city of Ventura, which is kind of like a podunk town compared to San Francisco and Los Angeles, we have Wall Street traded companies owning apartment complexes and condo villages. And so with them involved, there's, there's no hope for control of housing prices.
Why don't you talk a little bit more? Are you talking about like Blackrock?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Well, Blackrock, the Cora Cora Building on the, on the corner of Ventura Avenue and Thompson. It's kind of between Thompson and Santa Clara. Cora Cora itself is not a Wall Street traded company, but it's owned by a company that trades on Wall Street that's involved in housing worldwide. So this phenomenon that we're seeing in Ventura of the poorest people becoming more and more of them becoming homeless, families, hardworking people are losing their housing simply by being priced out of the market. And in, in Southport, England, there's a Facebook group I'm on because I have relatives in England and I stumbled across it. Southport, England is having the identical problem we're having. And their government allowed regulations identical to our state's regulations during the same time period. Those are the regulations that allow someone to buy a building, allege they're making major renovations, and then kick everyone out of the building. There's no guarantee they'll ever renovate or do anything other than maybe slap some paint on the outside so it looks good. Then they triple the rent or triple the rent.
I was also wondering if you guys are seeing a lot of even more like local, like, but monopolies, like the Ventura Investment Company, like everybody knows. Everybody knows that Ventura Investment Company owns, you know, a fair chunk of Ventura County, right? And so it's almost like they're almost like operating on that same model. Are you guys seeing that in Ventura as well?
Yes, there's actually a, there's one man who's involved with a kind of redevelopment, real estate investment and redevelopment company. They operated in Los Angeles County for ten years, caused thousands of people to become homeless, and then LA County caught up with them. And he got kicked out. They're not allowed to do that business in LA County anymore. Within weeks of that order coming down from the county supervisors, he came to Ventura and he started buying property here. He's purchased five or six that I know of. One of them was last year on the corner of Simpson and Cedar, no, Center and Cedar. And those tenants, the day they got the eviction notice, came to the city council. I wasn't on it then. I went and stood with them and spoke with them, asking for tenant protections and help against this malicious guy. And during the, during the time they were asking the council for help, he was going to their complex, knocking on the doors, offering them pizza and asking them to talk because he wanted them to move out quicker. But landlords aren't allowed to do that. They're not allowed to, you know, accost tenants or harass them, and that was clearly harassment. Two of them were people who work at night and he banged and banged on their doors until they would come out and see who it was. So he's, he's, you know, working his little magic through Ventura. But those tenants asked the city council to help them. The city council went through about three weeks, some long meetings, to try and establish an ordinance of tenant protections. And the mayor and two other council people, one was council member Johnson, who brought the request to the full council, fought real hard for any results to be retroactive. At that meeting, there were a couple of council people who were adamant that it not be retroactive. The tenants in question were all Spanish speaking, hardworking members of my community, well-respected in my community, active with their kids in the schools, been in Ventura for many years. And yet, council member Sanchez Palacios said very strongly that she would not support the ordinance being retroactive. In the future, it's fine, but she wouldn't support it being retroactive because she works for a government leader, a state legislator, and she has, quote, "Seen so much fraud in my life, how can I trust these people?" And she looked those tenants in the eye and said that. So that's the way people in government think. And it was almost that night that I really decided firmly that I was going to run. People had been telling me to get on city council before, but when she said that and I felt how painful that was to the people in my neighborhood, I decided to get on city council.
Why don't you actually tell us a little bit more about that? Because the same thing happened that I saw on Monday night when she was sitting there, and I don't want this to turn into like, you know, an attack on Jeanette, but she did that. That sounds exactly like what she said Monday night at that city council meeting just the other night when she said that, what did she say? Council members are not activists? And that, and that, and that she respectfully disagreed with the public, her constituents? And, and she kept citing, she kept citing that she works, she works for an elected official and I was, I was stunned. Why didn't you tell us more about that? Because it's the same thing. I mean, is this a habit?
It's kind of her mantra. She has been working for Jackie Irwin for some years. Before that, she worked for Das Williams. Ironically, Das Williams, before he was elected, lived in a van. He was homeless. She was one of his staff members when he was in the state legislature and still didn't learn any respect for people who are perceived by her as less important. And so it's kind of shocking how much a person can go through their life and not learn. But she also comes to this country from Nicaragua, which is a, a country, a state that is not well-respected by the United States or in line with the United States. So it's very hard to immigrate from Nicaragua unless you're from the elite class. So I believe that, that really it's her whole upbringing that gave her that perspective, I guess, is a respectful thing to say because I am sitting on council with her.
It was just so stunning.
She also, yeah. She, she has been given the statistics that came out of the US Department of Commerce about housing numbers at the, at the beginning of COVID or in the middle of COVID, when everybody was pushing and pushing to develop all these properties and we're still doing it in Ventura. And a study had been done over four years, was released in 2021 that says there are sixteen million, at least sixteen million empty homes and empty properties in the United States, but less than five million homeless. So we don't really have a housing problem or a problem of property. Some of it has to do with matching the people with the homes. But what our problem is, is that there are people who are keeping that housing stock off the market deliberately to artificially inflate the prices because supply and demand rules communism. Oops, capitalism, oops. Yeah, supply and demand kind of culture. Get this turned off, sorry. Yeah.
Yep. This term we like to go to called artificial scarcity.
It's criminal. It's criminal. No. Well, and then there's, there's the, the commodification of housing. So, you know, a lot of, pardon?
Have you heard about the latest like Big Pharma freakout, Merck freaking out over Medicare and the government being able to set prices on like less than 1% of drugs? And they're sitting on like-
Yeah, Merck has been a big control-
In profits, profits.
Exactly, exactly. I just was gonna, gonna mention the battle that big business owners put up, not wanting to pay a livable wage to their employees while they're raking in, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars a year. Profit, pure profit, so.
Billions. And then not only that, they also turn around and they gouge the taxpayers because companies like Walmart will intentionally pay their employees so they make just little enough where they qualify for benefits. And they may pay for it instead of giving them a living wage.
And then the politicians, the higher level politicians in Washington who control those benefits, point their fingers at people who live on low income like us and, and get benefits and say, oh, you just want entitlements. And they don't acknowledge that their bazillion dollar tax breaks is an entitlement. And their farm subsidies that they get paid to not grow corn on their forty acres is an entitlement. Student loans are an entitlement. And only the poor pay them back. The wealthy have ways to not pay them back through manipulating the tax code. And so everybody is on government benefits, but only the poor are acknowledged to be. And that's just the way we've built poverty because it benefits, it benefits the people in power.
Going back to the issue of housing though, do you like, like, you know, we talk about affordable housing, but you're saying there's really no, like, it's not really that we don't have a stock of housing, right? Because, you know, like Yimby always argues, oh, it's that we're not building enough. We need to build more. We need to build more. Well, is that it? Or is it, is it that it's inaccessible? Is it really that it's being constricted so as to control the market? Like, is, like, what is, what is really the issue? It's, it's the market, right?
Not totally, but part of it is the market. The, the Yimby people, for example, a lot of them are connected to developers. And in, in around the years nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and five, the state legislature, legislature got packed with developers. Instead of lawyers making the rules, developers filled those state legislative seats. And that's part of where our housing got turned over on its head. So the Yimby people, instead of acknowledging that we have many, many empty units, want us to build more. Some of them believe that by flooding the market, it'll force the hands of the people controlling those empty units. I don't see that it will. I think regulations have to be made and they have to be made at the bottom. Like city councils and county governments need to start really addressing this issue because it won't get solved from the top down. And that's because A, there's too much corruption and the people who are in control are too much in control. But an example is, do you remember Rod Blagojevich? The former governor of Illinois? That getting arrested around the time Obama was elected?
No, I haven't.
I was following, well, I was following a story that, that included him for about six months, even before the election, which was a, a big company owner had three properties and he kept not paying his employees. And he didn't pay and he didn't pay. And so they unionized and threatened to strike against him and he filed bankruptcy. And bankruptcy courts have a tendency to pay the other businesses first. So Blagojevich issued an order to him and to the banks. He can't touch the courts because it's a federal court. But he ordered the banks to pay the employees first before they make other payments. And the bank said, well, why shouldn't we? And he said, if you don't, I'll pull all of Illinois State accounts out of your banks. And that was Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo was the bank that Illinois used for everything. And the next day, the, the bankruptcy court let the people waiting for paychecks know that there was no more money left for them to be paid. And Blagojevich canceled all of Illinois's bank accounts with Wells Fargo. And two days later, the strange accusations against him came from Washington. So I doubt very much that he did what they said. I know that, I know enough about our government and technology to know that they could listen to phone calls of me for two years and say, you know, I was plotting to overthrow Serbia or something by mixing up the language. You edit your podcasts. I'm, I'm sure you could make me look really foolish. So, you know, I, I, I really don't think that Blagojevich was trying to sell a senate seat. I think they're getting even with him because Wells Fargo was one of the banks that funded Obama's campaign. So all these corrupt levels of government control how we think. They control the media right now. It's very hard to get really good press out of the VC star. I, I was shocked that Wes wrote about the Mike Johnson thing, except that, you know, it was, it looked, it made us look a little bit worse than Ojai and that's the big thing right now, you know? Which council's worse? So. I just see so much corruption. I think we have to fix it at a small level. And housing will only be fixed if we stop commodifying it. Our own governor said recently, housing's a human right. But whether or not he's going to sign a bill that pushes that idea, I don't know. I, I spent eleven years paying off my landlord's mortgage. He bought a house for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. He listed it for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know what he got for it, but that was the going rate for that size property in Ventura after the pandemic. And I'm still, I still haven't gotten my security deposit back, even though he took, got the keys from me the day he handed them to the purchaser. So he didn't have to clean up or fix anything. He owes me the deposit back. That's how people in power and people with money are. They're not going to give you a penny if they can avoid it.
I was going to say, unless they think they're going to, unless they think they're going to get sued. That's the only time they will give you your money back is if for some reason they think you have a way to sue them.
Right, that's right. And they have to really believe it because they will not spend a penny on an attorney if they can help it.
Right.
My, my landlord had to harass me for two and a half years and still didn't get me out because I know enough about the law. I kept telling him, just get a lawyer and serve me properly. And he wouldn't do it and he wouldn't do it. We had phone calls in the middle of the night from him. And finally, he had to go get an attorney because I wasn't going anywhere. So, you know, the tragedy for me is most people don't understand the nuance of eviction law. So when their landlord gives them a notice and then starts threatening them, they leave. Our state attorney general last year made it a felony for a landlord to do what he calls self-help evictions. This is landlord side, self-help. When you harass and threaten your tenants, that's a felony. If it's for the purpose of getting them to move without paying for an eviction or going to court. In, in the state of California, our state attorney general got the legislature to pass that into law.
Good.
And I, and that's a powerful thing to have him do that. But that's because so many landlords were using that tactic. I mean, my, my landlord turned my water off. He turned my water off, thinking that would make me move. You know, I'm well-connected in the city of Ventura, so he turned it off. I called and turned it on. You know, some things you just couldn't control, you know?
That's awesome.
But.
That's what happened in our last-
I'm disabled. I need water, you know?
Yeah, that's what happened at our last rental also. And that's when I just typed in the chat. That's when we found out there's only one attorney in all of Ventura County that will actually represent tenants. So a lot of times, I mean, I think people just don't know, they just don't know how to get the help or where to go to because you call a whole list of attorneys, but they all say, oh, landlord only. So you have-
Yeah, and a lot of them ask you a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those landlord-only attorneys ask you a lot of questions to get information from you, then tell you they don't represent tenants. Then they call around and find out your landlord and get paid for the information they sell him.
Yeah.
So that's also a problem. It's, you know, I don't know if you guys ever studied Shakespeare, but Henry VI, after the Battle of Agincourt, one of his people asked him, so what's the next step, your highness? And he said, first we kill all the attorneys. That was five hundred years ago. They're just a little literary, literary, you know, commentary there. Literature. So, yeah.
Great.
We need to do more.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if you saw, I sent you a link to the meeting where the, they were quibbling about the law for tenants protections.
I didn't get a chance to watch.
It was supposed to, yeah, it's a long meeting, so I didn't think you would. It's like five hours long, but it's among the public speakers, you see the people who are being evicted. And then just think about Jeanette saying anything rude to them, you know, it just is heartbreaking. So. Yeah.
Yeah. So my, my next question for you, Liz, is you mentioned Mike Johnson. The attempted removal of city of Ventura council member Johnson was a localized example of an ongoing trend of what I see as city governments attempting to punish politicians and citizens who speak out on various issues. So beyond the obvious, why do you think this is happening? And do you think it is fascist in nature?
It's not just people who speak out per se, but people who are unafraid to take on the bigger powers.
Yeah, I think that's kind of-
So in Ojai, yeah. In Ojai, Susa Francina became the deputy mayor. As long as she just was a city council member and went about her business, the other council members kind of ignored her. She always, like me, spoke up about the wrong side of issues. And so she voted alone. Mike and I usually vote together. But when the, all the Brown Act violations stirred up Ojai City Council, everybody else is involved in it, but she kept out of it. She didn't, wasn't interested in that battle. So they elevated her to the interim mayor while the Brown Act is being investigated. And the, the mayor and her supporters got angry. So they had a meeting and were told by their city attorney, you can't remove an elected official that easy. And so today I saw on the Ojai Valley News website, I just saw the little ticker on top saying the council's investigating how they can sue Susa Francina, how they can sue their deputy mayor, and their purpose is to get rid of her. Her biggest transgression is that she's homeless and living in a vehicle and she found a more comfortable spot just outside of her district than in it. And you're supposed to live in your district. So they're trying to get rid of her because of that, because she couldn't find housing. Ojai is about the size of my district in Ventura. It's got about eight thousand voters. So her district is comprised of four and a half city blocks. And she couldn't find housing and so they're trying to get rid of her. So with Mike Johnson, it, it, it's nothing to do with the public accusations they made. It's more about the fact that he fought so hard against the corrupt city management. And that's a city management that really wants to control what the council thinks and does. I mean, I've gone through six months of, after every council meeting, if I don't vote on something to make it unanimous, if I vote different, the city manager, interim city manager calls me into his office and says, why did you do that? You know, I wanted a unanimous vote. And, you know, I've taken to telling him it's none of his business why I did it. You're not my boss, so don't expect me to be your lackey. I'm not going to do it. And I think that's part of why it's, he's left me without barrier removal on the council deals, but it's starting to affect my health and it's already destroyed one wheelchair and I'm not going to let a rental get broken because you have to buy it if you break it, if it's a rental, so. It, it's tough. So Mike Johnson's thing was he fought tenaciously and he wasn't afraid to speak to let the citizens know of how corrupt that administration was, how they were abusing money. And when the citizens demanded a forensic audit, council did not want to do it. And Mike fought very hard for that. So this action that we just had was retaliation from the previous city council, from the previous administration and the previous city manager who ended up getting fired. And so, you know, really, I, I didn't want anything to do with it. It was nothing to do with me. And I have to say, Mike Johnson is the most genuine, humble person I've ever met in elected office. And, and he has mentored me over the years while I was getting onto the board of the community council. We have a lot of commonality and issues, you know, we both are very for safety in our streets, not police safety, but safety among the citizens and better transportation. And, you know, we stand by a lot of the same issues. He also was the only city council member who came to help us when my neighborhood was fighting SoCal gas compressor. And they started working illegally on the project before the state had given them permission. And the, the kids were all over their campus coughing from the dust blowing in the wind from their, the digging at the SoCal gas site. And we called the air pollution control district and the guy who takes care of that was sick and they said he'll be there tomorrow. So we called Mike Johnson and in ten minutes, he was at the site, got the city code enforcement people and shut it down. So I dare say that SoCal gas also pressured the city a lot about him.
Yeah, I mean, I could do an entire- I could do an entire episode about. The dire necessity for a public takeover of utilities. It's, it's.
Yes, yeah, oh yeah.
That we have for-profit companies in charge of like people's water and keeping their lights on.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. Well, and you know, for years they've told us that. This gas is natural, but it's actually toxic. And over the past three years, we've had some radically important. Studies out of universities that tell us how dangerous it is. To have it in our homes. You know, they, they told us for years, oh no, it can't harm you. Uh, we're just putting this other smell in it, so if it wa- if, if you smell it and it's leaking, get the hell out, because you know. But it's not dangerous. Yeah. It's, that's just gas. I mean, we can go on about all the others, but. I, I happen to um, live in Northern California. When the city of San Bruno exploded.
Yep.
Because of gas pipelines. Yeah. And um. Yeah. And, and now, you know, they're, they're setting up this neighborhood for that. We have the same kind of underground vent system that San Bruno had. Even though the state ordered them removed 40 years ago. There's a few cities that still have them. So, you know. I'm still alive, I'm happy for that. Oh, and also uh. I, I wanted to say San Bruno again, but no. The, the SoCal gas uh, storage that exploded. Uh, Porter Ranch.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's a state senator.
Methane.
Yeah, and they're still, a lot of them, the kids are suffering from cancer. Ali Gashimi. Who is the head of our air pollution control district. Just got hired about two years ago. He was living in Porter Ranch, working for. For some LA county district. And um, he had to move, he had to move, he had to leave there. And move his kids because they were having chronic, chronic nosebleeds. For two weeks before. The leak was, was publicly noticed, even though they, the gas company probably knew about it. But you know, you get, you get him on your show, you get Senator Henry Stern on your show. I know a couple of people who were heavily involved in the first push and activism there, you know? There should be shows about that. Santa Susanna. Um, what may come here?
Yeah, not to mention.
You know, the, the California Public Utilities Commission. They changed their regulation last December. About expansion of gas. And they changed that regulation because of the work of. Um, La Puente in Oxnard. Uh, the SoCal gas compressor in Ventura and the leak in Porter Ranch. The three, the three communities. Were at every. Public Utilities Commission for almost two years. About the problems of SoCal gas and their lies, how they lie to the community. And the Public Utilities Commission began investigating and found that they always bury things. In rate, a rate case where they're asking for more money. Like they're, they want to do a. You know, a hundred million dollar expansion of the compressor here in Ventura. And it, it was hidden in two paragraphs in a rate case. And so that's how they were getting away with things. So the Public Utilities Commission changed their rule. That if they want to expand anything. A compressor or pipelines or storage, they must do an environmental impact report. So that's a great thing, I think. The fact that they listened and they're doing it is a great thing. So.
The, the thing, um, again, that uh. Getting back to this issue of like the city council and that meeting on Monday night was so striking to me. And I put in, I put in to do a public comment over Zoom, but I got to a point where I was like. Jesus, this is gonna go on for hours and I had to pull it because it was just. Comment after comment was just in support of mine.
It was a long meeting.
Um, but what was, what was so.
Well, and, and there was, there was not. There was not one speaker that spoke against. There was not one person who spoke against.
That's what I was gonna say.
And yeah, there were two council people. Yeah.
Yeah.
There were two council people who were adamant that he had to have the full punishment, that there was no, no way to. To remove or reduce anything.
Yeah.
It was quite a battle.
So, so what, what was so, like besides Jeanette's comment, um. You know, about the activist that was so striking to me. Was, was that not, literally not a single person. Had a negative comment and yet still you had these council members that they, it's like they had their own agenda. And so my question, my question then is like. What can we do to combat this? Because it seems like an intentional. Uh, and I, and I talked to Mike a little bit about this afterwards over Twitter. Um, it seems like an intentional effort to undermine representative government. And, and my question is, like, what can we do to combat that? Because you have 60 people come to a meeting. And speak and then they still ignore, like, what can we do? Does that?
Being, being a child of the 50s and 60s, my first gut response is. We have to protest. We don't have to go to the streets, that's not working anymore, it just gets them to accuse us of being terrorists. But we have to find other ways of protest. So. I learned a few weeks ago that a very big Achilles heel for a lot of council members is they don't like reading email. And some high school students started emailing us. About four weeks ago. And, and I of course was answering every email and I believe Mike probably was too. And so that encouraged other students and we got like 200. I'm still getting some, you know, leading up to graduation. But I answer all my emails to the extent possible. And, but the, the other, other council people were complaining. Oh, Akbar, you gotta get this to stop, you know, mayor, you gotta stop. So. The city manager took the mayor to the high school. To tell the students, here, I'm here, I'll answer all your questions and you can stop emailing us. And I got emails about that, you know? The kids are so savvy. I got emails about it. So I'll tell you. You wanna start a campaign? Have people start emailing. And find your topics, for example. Corrupt city councils. You know?
Yeah.
Um, inappropriate government leadership. And then write whatever you want to write, but send those emails. And flood our box, mailboxes with those emails. That's a real form of protest for a city council.
Wow. Cause it's like your job.
I mean, think about it.
I know, this is, this is hilarious.
Yeah.
This is like your job, your job. That's what I was so, I was so stunned, like before the meeting even, I was like, wait a minute, Mike was just. Doing his job.
Exactly, exactly.
That's crazy.
I mean, what, what is a city council supposed to do? We're supposed to make sure. That the taxpayers' money. Is being properly spent and not being stolen or abused.
Right.
That's exactly what he did. That he's being punished for. And before the. Before the closed session meeting that we had where everybody was supposed to vote to condemn him to death. Um, which they reported that I voted with them. That, that's a horrific thing. Um, I didn't go in there to vote with them, but I got threatened badly, so. Um, but all that aside, that day. Before the meeting for about four hours, I was getting phone calls from people. Saying to me. You know, they're gonna get rid of Mike Johnson, you should vote with them. And I'm like, what are you talking about? I didn't acknowledge that I even knew there was gonna be a meeting. And. About, I think I had seven phone calls. One of them was not a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And when I asked him who told him we were having a meeting, he named someone from the Chamber of Commerce. So they're after him. I don't know why, although they didn't support his election or campaign, they didn't support mine either. They poured so much money into the others, that's why they're there. So they, it's their, you know, they want control of the city. They want everything done the way they say it be done. And God help you if you don't go along with them. I, I get, I get emails from him every day wanting me to go to some meeting or another meeting and. You know, I don't have time for it. I'm not interested in their stuff. I think it's criminal that. Our city's State of the City speech every year. Is given first to the Chamber of Commerce where they sell tickets for $75 each. The city buys 20 or 30 so staff can go. And it's a fundraiser for the Chamber of Commerce. That, that money should be going into programs for unsheltered people. And programs to help. Families that are, you know, getting evicted. It shouldn't be going into the hands of the Chamber of Commerce. And in the last couple of years, they're doing it twice a year. Why do we need a State of the City speech twice a year? Except to line the. You know, the, the money doesn't go, this is the other problem. The money doesn't go in the general fund of the Chamber of Commerce. It goes to their political action committee. So we're doing a fundraiser for them. That is building up the money that they're gonna spend to get their candidates elected. I think that's criminal.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and back to your, and back to your point about the media, we don't have, this isn't like Los Angeles where. You have. A local media that is gonna report on this. We don't even have local TV station. I suggested this a couple of years ago. Why aren't we, why are we not getting some local TV news? Here in Ventura County, we have almost a million residents. Why do we not have some local news station? Because they would be reporting on these things. And I'm starting to think that that's exactly why we don't. Because if we did, people would know about.
Yeah, because the. And, and it's a pushback from the, the city managements. They don't want to see that happen. The um, there's a woman who works at K E Y T in Santa Barbara. I'm sorry, I can't remember her name right now, but. If, if she was given the press releases for these city events, she would show up. They don't send the press releases there because they don't want her to come because she's honest and straight. She asks tough questions. Um. The, I heard from someone today that, that this meeting was covered by the Ojai Valley News. And um. I, I think that was a guy that was sitting with Wes Woods from the VC Star. I think he was sitting with a. Someone, obviously another reporter. Um. KCLU has TV and radio and they didn't show up and they should have. And it's just, you know, the. It's possible that the chamber has money in the ownership of the paper. Or the ownership of the paper just. Um. Enjoys schmoozing with the top management at the city. I'm not sure, I haven't figured it out yet myself, but. I, I have, I believe that. Both the VC Star and the. Um. Ojai Valley News. Are going to do follow-up articles about the disability access. I would hope that they do some follow-up articles. Present in council chambers and watch Mike Johnson do his job. Because he does it better than anyone we've had in the city of Ventura for years. So, I mean, he's, he's no threat to anyone. He never has been. So.
I only met Mike once.
It's uh.
Sad, he, he bought us all beers at Rincon and he's just the sweetest man. We, we had a great conversation about.
Oh, you, yeah, you went to one of his events at Rincon, yeah.
He's a great guy.
No, he's a wonderful person. Yeah, yeah. And he cares, you know, he cares about. Keeping the public informed about government and he cares about getting young people involved. So that's why, even though we haven't talked about it. I'm reasonably certain that he's been answering emails. From high school students as well as me.
Yeah.
He cares.
Yeah.
So it's a sad commentary. On the whole worldwide phenomena of. Say, that it reaches down all the way into city governments. You know, I was appalled in, in 2020, after January 6th, after the inauguration. I kept seeing photographs, usually in the LA Times. Of the White House and there's some story about Biden or story about arresting people or whatever. But they always use that photo of the front gate. With a padlock on it and soldiers with guns. And I never thought I would see that in my lifetime. I never thought I would see that. I was, I was almost an adult, I was well, 19. When Watergate happened. And we went to protest Watergate to Washington DC and were on the lawn. Excuse me. On the lawn behind the back, the back lawn of the White House. At that time, there was no fence. We had our signs, we were singing songs and chanting. And Richard Nixon came outside. Down onto the lawn and spoke to all of us. And, you know, we were, we were protesting him. And of course, he had his secret service there. But they weren't arresting us. He was trying to engage with us and, and talk about. Politics and how, you know, the power gets to you and. You know, I, I kind of thought hearing him that he was sort of trying to apologize, but he couldn't, he wouldn't. But. That was. 50 years ago, 45 years ago, 60, yeah, about 47 years ago. The president could walk out of the White House and talk to people on the back lawn. Now it's a fortress. And then Biden put a lock on the gate. You know, Democrats are supposed to be different. Well, they're not. They're, they're all the same. Once they get to that level in Washington, it's all the same.
Yeah, I mean.
So, yeah.
We've talked.
My life story, sorry.
No, it's super interesting. We, we've talked about this multiple times Heather, but. How night and day the response would have been. If it were Black Lives Matter protesters that had approached the White House on January 6th. Rather than fascist and white nationalists, Trump supporters. Yeah, and the National Guard.
They wouldn't have lived, they wouldn't have lived to stand trial. In this country, they would have all been killed.
It would have been a bloodbath. No doubt about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and.
It's a horrible thing.
I think the orchestrator, like the, like the very high-profile orchestrator. Would have been held accountable at this point as well. You would not still have him sitting. In his, you know, on his golden toilet in Florida, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I had heard in some media that he was supposed to turn himself in today. I don't know if he did. The indictment went down, but I, you know. Turned himself in, he probably got on a plane and flew to Bulgaria to live with his wife and, you know. In Europe or something.
Oh my God, it'd be a joke too if one day Andrew Tate and Donald Trump got locked up.
Yeah.
Did you, did you hear stuff about Andrew Tate over in Romania, how he's just like on, on camera bragging about how, oh, I love Romania. Because they don't care about corruption. They have really weak laws. So.
That, you know, it's.
They're just eating that.
Yeah. You know, it, it's funny that. Like the media will, our media will focus on that kind of situation. And not talk about what's going on here. Yeah, whenever I see a big story about, you know. Uh, environmental disaster in the Black Sea or, you know, Norway and Sweden having a tiff over. Their border control. You know, something big is happening in the White House and they're hiding it. So, I get my best US news from, from Deutsche Welle.
Oh, interesting. I'll have to look that up.
Yeah.
Did you know that there's a war happening in Ukraine by? Did you know that there's a war happening in Ukraine by chance?
Yeah, I kinda noticed. Kinda noticed. Did you know the U S has created a war in Ukraine by any chance?
Yeah, and we're continuing to keep it going because that's the plan. That's what we do. We we love, we love forever wars in this country.
Yeah.
This one is, this one is very. Go ahead. No, go.
I was just gonna say, we have to keep our weapons manufacturers well paid, you know.
Exactly.
Or they may turn on us. Yeah.
This one is very, I'm very irritated about this today because Adam Kinzinger, do you guys know who he is? He was in the U S Congress. He's now like, he like retired. He's from Illinois, U S Congressman. Now he's like on CNN. This morning, he tweeted about about. You know, going and ki- killing some more Ruskies or whatever. And and I replied to hi- I replied to his tweet. As basically saying like, this is ghoulish. Stop celebrating killing people. And he retweeted. My tweet and put me on blast to all his fucking supporters. About how I'm so naive. And I'm just a nobody, okay? But he puts me on blast to all these, you know, war. More mongering, you know, whatever. And all these people have gone. After me and called me a Russian, a Russian apologist and. Like, you can't, you can't either, you like, can't have any opinion against it.
I know it sucks. That's why, like, our good friend Chris, every time he has an opinion on his podcast, Heather, he has to. Like, you know, quantify it. He has to say, oh, by the way, I don't support.
Yeah.
It's like, all I said.
By the way, Heather, you're not a no. You're not a nobody anymore.
Well, that's nice.
You're very well known now. You're famous. Everybody knows you now. Or every, everybody from one side knows you.
Right. It's like you can't just say, you can't say, man, it's very ghoulish to, I mean, like, especially like. A congressman knows, like, why people join the military. Like, a congressman knows that a lot of people that join the military. Especially in Eastern Europe do it because they're poor or they have to and they have no other choice. And it's like, they're go- you're you're celebrating extinguishing human life, like. Whatever, we're there, but do you have to celebrate that? That was all. And it's, I don't know. I guess that makes me a Russian asset.
I have the same problem with the Middle East. Because. You know, a fourteen year old kid throws a rock over the fence and hits a soldier's helmet and suddenly, you know, fifteen people. From his family die. Because, of course. Everybody has a right to defend themselves. You know, I I really struggle with that. I know my my ancestors are rolling over in their grave cuz they. Many died in Germany in camps, but. The the gratuitous taking of human life is horrifying. And it happens too often sanctioned by government. You know, if if left to their own devices, people would get along.
I just, well, I see just like disgusting, like fascist authoritarian comments all the time that just kinda like normalize death and murder. I see people.
Yeah.
Defending, like, running over protesters or anytime somebody is killed by the police, the first question is, what did they do? A- and that, that's a gross. Aspect of our society that that needs to be destroyed.
Well, and the. You know, the law is really strong about differential treatment of people. You can't treat equally situated people differently under the law. If you give one a special benefit, you have to give the other one a benefit. If you're arresting one for something, you have to arrest the other one for something. Now, we know realistically it doesn't happen. But I will never forget that little pipsqueak. During the George Floyd protests. Walking up to the police with his gun over his shoulder and getting a bottle of water from him before he went and shot people. With no reason and no right.
Don't even get me started on.
And he wasn't properly prosecuted.
No.
But, you know, all the protesters were doing was. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, our country's kind of gone. Over the edge with everything. I think, I think when we're. Yeah, it is absolutely. And it's rising up, you know, the way it, the way it has in the past. The. You you um. Had asked previously or, you know, in preparation, a question about. The attack on the LGBT community. And how it sits in Ventura County as compared to other places. And in some ways, it's worse in Ventura County. Because it's not open. People don't walk up to Doug Halter on the street and call him a faggot. But they'll do a lot of things behind him to try and disrupt his business or. You know, uh, uh, harm his lifestyle or whatever. He and I don't agree politically, but. But I I see a lot of things. Because I'm, you know, kind of. Sitting off to the side. People think, you know, those of us in wheelchairs are imbeciles cuz. Our brains must be in our rear end cuz we're sitting on it, you know, I I don't know why they think that, but. Um, they don't give a lot of us credit for what we're able to do. And and I watch sometimes from a distance. And I remember when. When the civil rights laws passed in the sixties. People in the South. Black people in the South. Were more suspicious and suffered more in some ways. Because before that law passed, everybody knew where they stood and where the other guy stood. It was open and blatant. But then after that law, it went underground. It became quiet. And that's a lot more dangerous. And that's how discrimination against blacks. And against Native Americans and against LGBTQ is here in Ventura. It's the, you know, we have enough Latino population that they're not as affected. But, you know, people still think that the Native Americans should go away. The first governor of California was paying for. A bounty on Native Americans here in California. It it was a true genocide that was attempted. And, you know, Casey Rodriguez stands up and speaks about it. And in the back of the room, people are making fun of her. And I'm just appalled at that. I'm appalled at that. But it's the society we live in. You know, and I get, I get pushback. Because I'm in a wheelchair. It's not as bad now as it was when I first moved to Ventura. Because people have gotten used to seeing me out in the street and stuff, but. You know. I couldn't get a job for twenty years because I'm in a wheelchair. No other reason. I I have a ton of education. And I'm very capable. I mean, I I think I show that when I'm. Well, at the last city council meeting, I didn't have a lot of barriers, so I was able to do more than usual. But, you know, I, all these people wouldn't hire me for no other reason than, you know. I I have a junior college teaching credential. The junior college wouldn't hire me saying. Our students couldn't learn from you. Look at you. You know, and that's kind of really sad. But that's the, that was the attitude when I moved to Ventura. It changed a lot, but they didn't give me a job. Yeah, so. I see it everywhere around me. I I notice when other people are discriminated against because of my life experience, I think. So.
Well, I mean, one of the primary reasons that I created this show was because I'm well aware that I come from a position of privilege. So I had the idea in mind to have people on the show and to lift up voices of. People who are historically marginalized. So.
Yeah, it's a great.
I thank you for speaking out and being here.
Yeah, well, thank you. You know, I'm I'm not afraid to speak.
Clearly.
That's the good thing for me that I can. Yeah, yeah. So I hope that you will um. Reach out and get, you know, there's three, three Schumash women. One is Casey Rodriguez. One is her cousin Sharon Guzman, Sharon? Or Brenda Guzman. We call her Cookie. And the other is Julie Tumamite Stensley. Julie is still the elder of the Schumash in Ventura Counts County. And she's cousins of both Cookie and Casey. And they all kinda do different things to try and educate the community. So it may be fun to have them on a show sometime and. You know. See, see what their life is and. What they experience.
I would love that.
Um, yeah.
Do, we wanna do a part two episode with you since I'm kinda short on time right now. So are you able to come back on Sunday?
Yeah. This Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Spending on your time.
Yeah, you can do it earlier in the day if you guys want. Um, I I'm pretty much open all day.
Yeah, I don't know. How how are you, Heather?
You're on mute.
Sorry. Sorry.
You're not on mute anymore.
Uh, and I'm in the playroom too, and I'm sitting here swearing. I'm in the, it's the storage for all my kids' toys and I'm sitting here swearing up a store. No, anytime after ten is fine for me.
Okay, uh, let's just plan on.
Okay. Yeah.
Noon work for you, Liz?
Okay, noon it is. Yeah.
Awesome.
Noon here and um. I will send you in in Messenger from one of the Instagram accounts, my, the phone number that I answer most. So that you've got my actual phone number cuz I'm sorry I missed your message earlier today about five, but.
I had to know that wasn't your number.
Yeah, well, it. That's, that's the Instagram account you messaged me on. It wasn't my phone number. Or somehow it went there. I didn't, I didn't get it as a text.
What about the one that I sent as a text?
Yeah. Well, that's. That's my number, but that phone isn't turned on all the time.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have a family phone. I have a city phone and I have my personal phone. I want you to have my personal phone number.
Okay.
Cuz that's the one that's on all the time. The other two, I just mute them, you know, I don't need to deal with them.
Perfect.
So.
So we'll see you on Sunday then.
Okay. See you Sunday at noon.
Bye.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
See you soon.
Welcome back to part two. So we've got Liz Campos back on the show. Liz, you were talking to me the other day about how the removal or the attempted removal, rather, of Mike Johnson is related to. The Patriot Act. Can you explain how?
Well, i- if you look back at the history of the Patriot Act. You would have to go back, back before that. To the nineteen eighties when. George Herbert Walker Bush became Vice President. It's the first time, I think, that we had a Vice President that came from the CIA. He led the CIA for years. He also went to the CIA from being an oil company executive. So that's when our government, I believe, started going down a very corrupt line. Then. When uh. September eleventh happened, and that's a whole nother two or three shows. When September eleventh happened. There was a uh deliberately pushed upon us panic. About how safe we could be in the U S. And from, from. Uh, our so-called enemies. And. In in that panic, in the midst of that panic. Our Congress, with the exception of one person. Voted to pass the Patriot Act. And most of them hadn't read it. It's like a ten thousand page document. It established the Department of Homeland Security. It gave extraordinary powers. Connecting the FBI and CIA in ways that had never. Been allowed before. And it started, well, it it continued, let's say it continued, the erosion of our civil rights. And I would like to explain about why I say it continued the erosion. That is because when, let's see. Ninety six. When Bill Clinton was president. Uh, Joe Biden was very powerful in the Senate. And Joe Biden pushed a bill that Hillary Clinton also lobbied heavily for. They called it the Super. Omnibus Crime Act. And when that bill passed our Senate and Congress, it took away the right of habeas corpus. Think about that. One of the strongest. Powerful things in our constitution. Is the right to habeas corpus. Because it means that they cannot disappear a person like penetrated in Chile. That if you disappear. And someone suspects that the police have taken you, they could immediately file with the court. To find your body. And you, as a person, would have to be produced in the court within forty eight hours. For the police to explain why they were holding you or why they picked you up. And that's, that's a very powerful. Protection. And what happened in that crime bill is. The arrest side, the civilian side of it. Was completely eliminated. And prisoners in jail. Can be treated very badly. And before that law passed. They could file a habeas corpus from the jail. And be brought before a judge to explain what the abuses were in the jail. And get protection. And that was limited to one time in their entire jail career, they can file habeas corpus. But in the, in the prison system in the U S, that's also the way that prisoners who are, who were convicted wrongfully and are innocent. Can. Ask for a review of their case. So once they use it once, it's done. They can't review their case. That, that law is why we have the Innocence Project. Cuz so many attorneys were appalled. At that happening. So that was followed by. September eleventh. And the passage of the Patriot Act. By every single Congressman and Senator except Barbara Lee. Barbara Lee of Oakland, California stood up to George Bush on every occasion. That he wanted to go to war, that he wanted to strengthen police powers and change the law against the citizens. She's now running for Senate and I don't care what anyone else says, she's my candidate. Because she sincerely cares about. Justice and people. So this Patriot Act, she also did not vote for, but everyone else did. It established the Department of Homeland Security. It strengthened the assault on the Constitution. Limiting free speech, for example. Um, after the Patriot Act was passed. If a president was coming to town or if there was a big event that was. Uh, politically pro U S. The, and you wanted to protest. You could be ordered to protest in a designated area that was fenced on three sides. And with plenty of fence to close in that fourth side if they need to. That's another thing that happened in Argentina and Chile in the sixties and seventies. Protesters were only allowed to protest in those fenced areas. And when they got out of hand, the fence was closed and in those countries they were killed. In our country, the police are supposed to use rubber bullets or wooden bullets. If they hit you on the head, they'll kill you anyway, even though they're called non-lethal. So. The e- everything I have seen with the Patriot Act. Takes me back to Germany. Before Hitler rose up. Um, the nineteen thirty, thirty one, thirty two, that era. They were slowly removing the rights of people. It when uh, what was his name? Il Duce. Mussolini, when Mussolini took power in the late twenties in. Mussolini, when Mussolini took power in the late twenties in Italy, the first thing he did was arrest all of his senators and congressmen. He put them all in jail. So Antonio Gramsci, who wrote the book on what fascism is, was the head of the elected government in Italy when Mussolini got in power and he was put in jail. And he never stopped speaking up. And he, he coined the word fascism and he was murdered in jail. He was murdered in jail. No accidental, no beating, no compliance call. They took guns and shot him in the head. That's what we're starting in our, in our country. Mike Johnson is an elected official and he's being told because of questions he asked from the Diaz in a city council meeting, he's a bully and he should be punished. And, and it's just wrong. It's just wrong. So, you know, uh, Ojai is trying to uh, get rid of one of their council members. Tuesday is the meeting. And she's the interim mayor right now because every other council member was involved in a Brown Act violation. She's the only one that wasn't, so they elevated her to mayor because their elected mayor was part of that Brown Act issue. So now all the others are ganging up on her to try and remove her because she's homeless. She's an elected official who's homeless. Well, so am I. And I've been told I'm next after they get rid of Johnson. But I'm not going anywhere. Neither is Mike Johnson. This is all the result of the Patriot Act. Uh, it would take two hours to explain how it went from the protests to elected officials, but it's what's happening. And it goes right back to the rise of fascism in the nineteen twenties. Uh, right now in uh, in Peru, last week in Peru, the new president, um, he fired all of his elected officials, their whole uh, government, elected government. He fired them. The ones who refused to leave were taken to jail. It's a worldwide problem. But it started in the US with the Patriot Act. The illegal war that George Bush perpetrated against the Persian people. He was arresting Persian people in the United States, arresting them and immediately taking the, them out of the country to torture them in illegal prisons. He was able to do that because of the Patriot Act. Because already habeas corpus was gone. Patriot Act is taking away freedom of speech. Patriot Act, Patriot Act is also broken down our freedom of assembly. Uh, the Fourth Amendment right to be free from search and seizures. A, a police officer at any time can walk up behind your car and reach under it and attach a tracking device on it.
Breonna Taylor was murdered by plainclothes officers.
Exactly, exactly. Who knocked on her door and did not identify themselves as police. And, and how many stories over the last ten years of people murdered in their homes when search warrants were supposed to be being served to the wrong address? Most of our police now have college degrees. But apparently they're not educated enough to read numbers on an address. Sad. It's very sad. So how do we combat it?
Yeah, go ahead. Liz, I had a question for you right after.
No, I, I don't know. That's my question to you. How do we combat it? I don't know.
I don't know either because from my, from my perspective, it seems like rather than the country becoming fascistic all at once, it seems like it's happening in localized pockets. Like I'm looking at like Florida, for example, it's not, it's not like twenty-five states all at once. It's individual states that are passing anti-trans laws, anti-LGBTQ laws, passing laws that are allowing people just to carry guns with no permits or any.
Anti-abortion.
Identification. Yep, anti-abortion. Do you, do you think that are, with all those localized pockets of fascism happening, do you think it's all gonna kind of mount together to ultimately like create a fascist dictatorship in the US? Or do you think that there are enough people in this country that are willing to push back on rising fascism and authoritarianism?
Well, that's a hard question in some ways because it, you know, I, I think using the word create implies that, that someone who's in power right at this moment has a plan. Um, if you, I, I've, I've read extensively the history of Germany under Hitler, once Hitler took power, the rise of the Nationalist Socialist Party. And what happened there first was laws were passed against groups of people, against gypsies, against Jewish people, against Catholics who supported the Jews. Um, there was another group also, uh, oh, the gays in Germany. So those four groups, there were laws passed against them.
Oh, and of course if you were socialist or communist or anything left wing.
Communist, yeah. So, um, the, the laws weren't well enforced. But Hitler kept talking about the laws and how we need more enforcement and we need people to tell us when they see these problems. And he got people stirred up. He got them divided like racially and developed a lot of animosity, got people all stirred up. So there were, there were his police, the Gestapo, but outside of the police, there were groups that they called in our history books brown shirts. The brown shirts were organized militias of people that were not part of the government. And the horror in Nazi Germany started, two things happened. He, the, uh, uh, manufacturer named Paul had, um, who had made ovens for years, was asked by Hitler to make big ovens so that people could be incinerated in them because they had a typhoid epidemic supposedly. So they tested those big ovens on people with disabilities. That was the first people killed in Nazi Germany. All of the institutionalized people, people who were disabled, who were kept in their homes, they were all taken in and murdered in these incinerators. So that's how they learned the incinerators worked. And then the other thing that happened was they stirred up the brown shirts against gays. And there's a, r- right before the actual, what we recognize as the start of World War Two, there was a night, they called the Night of the Long Knives because the brown shirts took their knives and swords and went all through their villages and murdered everyone that was known to be gay.
Now, I don't know if you saw that, I don't, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask you, I don't, I don't know if you saw, cause that's a perfect, our next question was about this, like, push against anti-woke-ism. Um, and I don't know if you saw yesterday, a video went viral of, um, uh, these Nazi, wha- what group was it, Jordan, that was outside Disney World?
Yeah, th- they were neo-Nazis.
Yeah, neo-Nazis.
Waving swastikas and all that, yeah.
Outside Disney World, uh, pro- protesting, you know, the Disney, you know, woke-ism, you know, that they're like all pissed off about the Little Mermaid and the gay pride stuff. And that's, you know, our next, uh, yeah, exactly. That's our next uh, question is like, is that what is behind this anti, you know, this really hard-right, anti-woke campaign? Like, is, is that what we're seeing? The same kind of going like these niche, like Jordan said in the chat, Proud Boys, Oath Keepers and these neo-Nazis, you know, really going after these marginalized groups? Uh, is that what you, what you're thinking?
The neo-Nazis, uh, the ones in the US and particularly those groups epitomized the brown shirts. However, they've been active in the US since the eighties or nineties. What, and, and they've been kind of under the radar a little bit. They've been attacking people. They're, they're behind a lot of racist assaults and also going through gay clubs and assaulting people, starting fires and things. They've been behind a lot of that, but kind of under the radar of the press. What gave them the confidence and authority to start doing this was the election of Donald Trump. And it's appropriate that that big video and Disney debacle is in Florida, not California.
Well, I would argue that it actually started before that. I would argue it started with the election of President Obama. That's when I saw a lot of like outward racism.
Speaking up. Right. Um, but it didn't, it didn't become the level of violence it, it has. It didn't become the way it is now until Donald Trump gave them permission. Uh, under Obama, people were getting angry and they were starting to collect guns because they thought they had to protect themselves because they thought this horrible, left-wing, black president was gonna come after everybody white in the country. That didn't happen, but they armed themselves and they bought ammunition to last ten years or twenty years. And then Donald Trump stood up and said, oh, we gotta be ready for this. We gotta do something. We have to take action. And how long was it after he was elected that someone walked into a, a black church in South Carolina and killed people? And that was the start of it.
And you know, you, you.
I, I mean, it started long before, but the start, the, the, the inciting of it so powerfully that young people started just indiscriminately killing someone that was different than them was Donald Trump, I believe. One problem we have now is that the, the current government overreacted in some ways, using the Patriot Act to oppress all of us. And the, the people who are in the Senate and Congress already had been getting pushback that we didn't know about from the president, from the Attorney General's office, being spied on by the FBI, that it has taken them this long to, to form an opinion enough to, to call out Trump. He should have been arrested immediately. It's sedition. Sedition occurred. That law should have allowed the, pardon me?
I was just gonna say, people wonder why I'm so suspicious, so skeptical, I should say, towards censorship. And I call the show Eight O Five Uncensored and it's because of the precedent. It's because I know everything that's used against the right wing will also be used against the left wing.
Exactly. And, and our, and our federal government legislators know that. That's why they were so cautious. I, one of my heroes in, in this whole situation is Liz Cheney. I, I have no, I have no regard or respect for her father. I think he was more behind the Patriot Act and the debacle of nine-one-one than anyone. But she learned from him the importance of an honest government. And her battle against Trump in Congress cost her her congressional seat and she knew it would. She knew it would, but her integrity and the integrity of our government was more important to her. So I, I watched those hearings with great disappointment of the Democrats who didn't even give her enough support. And that's why we're still, you know, threatened with Trump becoming president again.
And you know, I, I wanna go back to, you said that, um, the neo-Nazis, it's interesting that it, it was in, at the Florida Disney, not at the, uh, Anaheim Disney in California. But I think that we do have, I mean, we do have neo-Nazis here too. Um, there's every month, I think, there's a Nazi uh, demonstration over the one-on-one up in Thousand Oaks.
Yeah.
But I think.
Yeah, Thousand Oaks is especially.
Yeah, but I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, but I think that the difference is that, um, getting back to our conversation on Friday is the media is choosing not to cover that here in California. And, and.
The media's choosing not to cover it is correct. And uh, there, the police are not taking action in California.
Yeah, and so that was, I, I wanted to ask you, like, like, why, why is that happening? Like, why are we not seeing that? Why are we not seeing the media cut? And also even, I don't know if you saw, but like a month or two ago, the Thousand Oaks Acorn got a lot of flack because they published that, um, uh, I think it was an op-ed by the editor that was very transphobic. Um.
Yes.
And like, why, why are we not getting that coverage? Why are the police not responding? And why is our local media here in California taking that kind of like moving so far to the right also? But, I mean, do you, do you have a thought on why this is happening? I mean, because in Florida, we're seeing it. But we don't.
Well, I do. I do have a thought about it. Um, the, it's all tied together. So we have a lot of neo-Nazis in California that are sometimes public and sometimes not. Two years ago, someone in my district came to me with photographs they took in the bathroom at Surfers Point. And it was covered, every inch of the walls were covered with swastikas. And on the outside of the door was written, if you don't belong here, you may not live here. Now, does that refer to the bathroom, to Surfers Point, to California? Who knows? It was quite ambiguous, but you opened that door and it was horrifying. That was two years ago in West Ventura. So I gave that to a newspaper reporter and I gave it to the police and I gave it to the person who was then our mayor. And I never heard anything about it publicly. I did get an email from someone on the staff at the city that they had painted the bathroom and that there was, uh, an organization that was gonna just walk through there every day and check what was going on and watch that park. And indeed, a homeless person was nearly killed in that park about three months later. Um, I believe personally, and this may, um, saying this out loud may get me a lot of pushback, but I believe that there are police officers who are active neo-Nazis in the police force here in Ventura.
That's not, oh, Ventura County. I was gonna say, that's not a theory. That's proven in Los Angeles.
No, no, no. I, I'm talking about in the city of Ventura and in Ventura County.
Okay.
And it, it frightens me that they're here doing that because we've always been a state that was open to everyone and welcomed everyone. Um, there's a, um, there has been for a few years intense control of our media, our, our print media here in Ventura County. And I think that has to do with who owns the media. And I don't mean USA Today, who owns the Star. I mean, the local publisher. Because one of their reporters, the West Ventura reporter, I talk to him all the time. I see him at events. Sometimes he's really excited about being able to cover something. Then the story never gets published. One time I asked him, why, why did that not get published? It was wild. And he said, yeah, uh, the boss didn't want it. The boss didn't want it. And he worked hard on it and he gets paid for those hours, but he loses out to pay for that article. So what, what happens with reporters is after a while, they stop reporting what they see. and start reporting what they know that the publisher is gonna pay him extra to do. That's part of it. So that reporter on the night we did the public humiliation meeting of Mike Johnson, um, had a huge glaring error in his story. I made the final motion that ended the meeting, trying as hard as possible to help Mike Johnson have some dignity left. And when he reported it, he said that I voted against it along with Bill McRehms. And so I had to ask the newspaper for a correction. Of course, they reported the correction in a small box on the second page. No one ever saw it. But that was because publisher kept pushing back. He didn't want the story to look good for Mike Johnson.
I think they lose a lot of really good talent at the the local media also. I don't know if you uh.
Yeah, they move on.
Yeah, Jeremy Childs, uh, who is, who has been an LGBTQ uh activist. I mean, he's a part of the community and I thought that his reporting was so fair. And uh, he just a really upstanding, good writer. And then when I saw him leave, I was like, well.
Yeah, no, he was, he was a talented journalist. And he was a journalist on the level of people like Dan Rather.
Yeah, I really.
So, you know, it's it's sad.
Yeah.
Now, if you follow the Desert Sun, which is out in Valeri or somewhere.
Yeah.
Um, a lot of the reporters from the star end up there. And they still sometimes cover activities in Ventura County because they connect it to activities in Kern County. And they publish everything in that paper. Ojai Valley News is pretty strong, are pretty willing to publish outspoken things. But our local media is very weak. And then we don't have television coverage here. Once in a while, you can get the person from K E Y T, NBC in Santa Barbara to come down, but and then what have you got? You got KVTA News, you know, with Tom Spence and Spencer Noran. Uh, they're gonna challenge the status quo. They're not gonna challenge it. So that's why podcasts are so important.
Yeah, I love podcasting so much.
No, and young people know that's where they find out what's really going on. It's, we need more and more of them. We need a podcast every night that spends the first five minutes talking about just today's events that we have to question or that we know to be correct.
Yeah.
And then go into the in-depth story. You know, we, it it's a.
Well, that takes me to another issue.
Stuart retired, you know? Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, like, there's a systemic effort of big business to absolutely crack down on the algorithms for content creators, especially left wing content creators. So whenever people are trying to find out information about whatever it is, trans rights, what's going on in the economy, and they're trying to get an either um centrist or left wing perspective, if you go on YouTube, for example, the top suggestions are gonna be people like Steven Crowder. It's gonna be Ben Shapiro, Fox News, PragerU.
Right.
And it's it's flooded with right wing outlets. And that's a huge problem. Like, if you're not, if if you're somebody that's just scrolling through YouTube and you're not like actively engaged with these accounts or a subscriber, very easily, the algorithm, after you finish a video, even if it's from a left wing content creator, will recommend something to you from like Fox News. Because this is considered, in air quotes for our audio listeners, um, an authoritative news source. Just because they're a giant corporation and they lie to us all the fucking time. But because they're technically a media outlet, they're authoritative and they're they're considered the legitimate news.
Right. Well, think about how news and how policing began in the United States two centuries ago. The police were created to control strikers, to return runaway slaves and to basically support the elite. And the newspapers were created by the elite to control outspoken. Now we would call them left wing politicians. Politicians who cha- challenged
Anti-Snow.
What all of the wealthy people wanted. Yeah. I mean, John Adams, you know, he never, he never got a good newspaper story about him in his entire life. Because he always said, no, that's not what we want. No, you people are all crazy in this Congress. We don't need England. We need to overthrow England, you know, and it took him a long time to convince people. People had to start being shot outside their homes for him to convince them they needed freedom from England. Still never got a good newspaper story. He was president, never got a newspaper story.
Think about, think about all the articles that just get published that are pure nonsense that I just post like on my Instagram page. Like the one I sent to you the other day, Heather. The Washington Post has like a huge issue with China planting trees. How dare they?
Yeah.
So bizarre. It's so bizarre.
It's just xenophobic nonsense. It's just fucking manufacturing fear and outrage against another country that has, that is no threat to you whatsoever.
Right, but those ideas don't suddenly come from a meeting of the minds in a newspaper office. They come because some idiot in government sends them a press release that says, oh, the FBI has been put on alert because of the suspicious nature of China planting trees. So that's what spawns that kind of article. You know, it it's just like the way the city of Ventura so heavily controlled the message about Mike Johnson that the county Democratic Party has been openly not supportive of him. They haven't been openly against him, but they're not taking a stance because they believe maybe he's bullying people. They haven't looked at it. They haven't reviewed it. Now, the city has forbidden anyone to reveal the council dates when the video, when the incidents took place, allegedly to protect the employee. But in the name of protecting the employee, they're publicly spear- smearing a council member. There needs to be some balance. So you know, some of us were in those meetings. A lot of people who are not on council, I'm on council, I can't talk about it. But plenty of people who are not on council were in the meetings. And because of the discourse about it, know exactly the incidents that that they're talking about. There was no bullying. One of those meetings, after Councilmember Johnson gave up his question and his request, the deputy mayor took it up and pushed and pushed and got it accomplished. It took two of them to do that. But there's no complaint against the former deputy mayor, who's now the mayor. There's only a complaint against Johnson. So that reeks of retaliation. This retaliation by a administrative body in the city that no longer is there.
Yeah, and I think it's just, go ahead, Heather.
I was gonna ask, do you think it would have been, it would have been like, like, do you think if the whole thing about the city manager had not come out? Like, there would have been less of a target on Mike's back? I mean, obviously, he wouldn't have had his.
There would have been no, no.
Yeah.
There would have been no target on his back. Because the the council meeting that happened five months before that, no one complained about until after that came out and he pushed.
I feel like Ventura County, there is like, we have a cultural, um, I don't know, like a thing with appearances, like we really, it is, I mean, I know it happens elsewhere, but I grew up in the Midwest and it was not as like extreme, like everybody, even people that are not involved in politics, it's like they care so much about what everybody thinks and making sure that our community looks perfect at all times.
Right. Right. And that is, that's why this, the Ojai City Council person, they're trying to get rid of her because she's homeless.
Yeah.
She's openly.
Is is all.
I'm homeless too. They they haven't touched me yet, but they're saving it. They'll come at me for it.
Yeah. So so do you feel like, I mean, like, what do you, what do you think? And that was kind of our next question. Um, was about, you know, targeting trans and LGBTQ, but really like, what do you think can be done to, to you know, counter this targeted attack on anyone that doesn't fit like the profile? You know, um, the 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 disabled community, the homeless community, the LGBTQ, like, what can we do to push?
Yeah, I mean. Right now, just, yeah, right now, it just feels like anybody is an enemy unless you're, you know, unless you're not straight, Christian.
Yeah. Wealthy.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So yeah, what can we do, Liz?
Part of Ventura County's problem is that it is too close to Hollywood. So we're all supposed to look like movie stars. We're all supposed to have money like movie stars. We're all supposed to be white Anglo Saxon Protestant believers. You know, um, I don't know when Jesus left the Christian church, but he he doesn't reside there anymore. Um, I think what has to happen is unity, total, really hardcore, get over myself unity with everybody who is being oppressed. We need to show up. We need to speak up. We need to be ourselves out in public and on Main Street and, you know, in the restaurants, just be ourselves and, you know, demand respect. It's, it's the only way we can continue. That's the point I'm at now is to say, okay, I gave you six months to remove the barriers at City Hall. You didn't do it? So now we're talking to the state and we're talking to attorneys and we're gonna do something about it.
I think the problem is.
I I'm patient to this point. So the same thing with LGBT. You know, there are people who want to kill us, but if we're all together, they can't. They can't. I saw a group of five, I think, kids in front of the milk room on Main Street last, I don't know, Tuesday or Wednesday in the afternoon. And um, Spins was with them outside. Um, and they were, they were there, you know, just riding their bikes around on Main Street in front of the milk room. Because no one was there. There was nobody downtown. The restaurants were having no customers. And the kids saw a drug deal go down in the mini park. And they took off yelling and screaming at these guys and they were forced to run away. The one buying the stuff and the one selling the stuff were forced to run away from the downtown because five children were chasing them on not electric bikes, just regular pedal hard bicycles. So those kids just banded together and said, get out of here, you know, take your fentanyl and get the hell away.
But we need more police to reduce crime, right?
Well, hire the thirteen year olds on bicycles, man. But I, you know, now, now what's happening is this Monday night, uh, the police brought a new ordinance they want us to pass to ban bicycles from Main Street. You know, there was an accident. There was an out, there was a uh, accident, I think, between two electric bikes or something, but but okay, ban electric bikes because we've taken cars away and they move pretty fast. Say if you have an electric bike, walk it. We have three businesses downtown that rent electric bikes. What are you doing to them? And then the kids, you know, this year, all of the parks and rec activities for young people are on the east side of town. There is nothing on the west side. They've got the schools fenced, they've got the parks fenced. So what do the kids have to do? Well, the ones that have bikes, ride them downtown. They're not allowed to go to the ocean by their parents because the west side doesn't have a swimming pool. So these kids don't know how to swim. That, you know, some people think it's because I got elected. The west side is now being attacked because I speak up too much. Maybe if I shut up, we'll get some things, but that's not me. Everybody needs to know what happens when you speak up and they try and silence you. So we saw it with Mike Johnson. This is a different way they're doing it with me, but I still think we all have to speak and we have to stand together. So if the LGBT community stands with people of color and they stand with people with disabilities, who's gonna cross that line? Who's gonna run up against us and say, get out of here? If we're all standing together. And I've been at protests when I was a kid locking arms, you know, about Vietnam. And the police turned and left. Until Kent State, when the National Guard killed people. The police left us alone when we stood together. So we need to do that here. We need to comment and speak at every city council meeting and say, hey, back off. You're disrespecting our community. So I I let the people who are um bicycle advocates and bike businesses know about Main Street. It's the same thing. No skateboards, no bikes. Uh, wheelchairs only if you really need them. That's a pathetic thing to say. You know, it's written pretty bad, so. We we need to, we need to take care of the kids. You know, this is an attack on young people who are strong.
And it's, you know, going back, yeah, no, I totally agree with everything that you're saying, Liz. I really do. I I think this really just kind of goes back to like, you know, the Nazi Germany thing that we have now with the anti-trans and anti-LGBTQ people. It's back then, you know, they were labeled as the other. They were labeled as the enemy. And that's exactly what's happening now. It's a stage in genocide.
Right. That's right.
Labeling somebody as outside of human beings.
Right. So when the, when the Supreme Court issued their bizarre ruling about abortion, women came out in force and marched and spoke in California. But if you ask every one of those women to come out for LGBT, they wouldn't. Because a lot of them are too conservative.
Well, there's even, you know, we've talked about this extensively, the problem with like liberal protesting. Like white women, liberal feminism. You know, they all get all worked up about Roe v Wade, saying that they're gonna burn down Congress. They're gonna go in with riots. And what do they do? They stand there on the side of the street for a few days with their cute little pink sign and their pink hats, yeah, crochet pink hats. And they don't do anything. They just kind of forget about it after a week. Or they're like, hey, you know what? I voted. I did my part. Fascism over, defeated.
Right. Or, you know, I couldn't defeat it because not enough of us voted together. Yeah. I'll tell you what, I I don't know if you were around when the um, when the statue of Father Sarah in downtown Ventura was protested. It was a time when all over California, people were yanking those statues off the pedestal and destroying them and burning the pedestals. And in our city, our mayor reached out to the elder of the Schumash and the Catholic Church and said, let's get together and figure out how to solve this. They sent out a press release saying the statue is being removed because it represents genocide. And people turned on the mayor and demanded city council ha- have a full voice and um stopped giving money to the mission and threatened the Schumash people. And when we had the protest, all the, all of the um, those same white women had their daughters ages ten, twelve, thirteen, standing on the st- had their daughters ages ten, twelve, thirteen, standing on the steps surrounding the statue with signs that read, protect the Holy Father Sarah. And I watched Casey Rodriguez and two other Schumacher people just walk through them and stand higher up with signs. So that the media couldn't even get a picture of the statue because their signs blocked it. And they said, this is the saint of genocide. And there was no violence, there was never any violence. But it, it was irrational that the Catholic community put those little girls up there to tolerate that. And so I was there, I couldn't get up where the statue was, I'm in a wheelchair, I'm down below the stairs. But I spoke to all those girls the whole time about my knowledge of Father Sarah, and I had knowledge because I used to work for the Franciscans before he became a state, a saint. And, you know, some of those girls were in tears because I was telling them what I knew. And their fathers would come and yell at me and get mad at me. Don't talk to my child, you're evil. You know, we need to educate all of our society in a way that they understand. You know?
And that's another point, Liz.
LGBT, yeah.
The revisionist history movement that's taken place across various states. The systemic effort to completely change the reality of historical events to better suit the right wing narrative and the, not even just the right wing narrative, it is the right wing narrative, but just like the pro-state, pro-US perspective, American exceptionalism.
Right. Right. Terrible word, isn't it? American exceptionalism, manifest destiny. What do we, what do we know about the US? Well, who was, uh, James Monroe? Let's see. Uh, Washington, Adams, Jefferson, Madison Monroe. Monroe was the fifth president of the United States. Monroe, Monroe sent the US military to invade Nicaragua. Because at that time already, the US business community wanted to build a canal between Central and South America, so the boats could cross without going all the way around. And there's a big, huge lake right smack in the middle of Nicaragua. So they figured they could dig from both sides, destroy the lake, make it a canal. And, um, the Nicaraguan people were really very strong and fought back. They've been invaded about seventeen times in our two hundred year history. But they've never not fought back. So ultimately, you know, a hundred years later, we went and started digging and built a canal in what we call Panama. There was no country Panama at that time. There was no country there. We cut into a lake in the northern portion of Venezuela and Colombia to create that canal. And we decided we would make a country out of it and call it Panama. Pan-American, it's a Pan-American canal, Panama. We didn't ask those countries, we just did it. But they knew after seeing what happened with Nicaragua, that they had no choice to comply. And well, look at, look at the cocaine trade. There are only three countries in the world that are the right combination of soil and climate to grow coca. Those three countries are Colombia, Peru and Bolivia. So Colombian cocaine trade is totally controlled by the US. US has military bases in Colombia that fly airplanes in and out of there to the US. The biggest, uh, most famous cartel leaders were from Colombia. In Bolivia, most of the cocaine is used by the indigenous people who live high up in the Andes because chewing the leaves takes away altitude sickness that also suppresses appetite. And they have, there's so much poverty there, they don't have food to eat, so they suppress their appetite. But if you read an article about cocaine written by the US, they don't say Colombia is the number one producer of cocaine in the world, Peru is the number two producer, no, they always say the evil Bolivia. Bolivia is the number three producer of cocaine in the world. That means it's the smallest. But the US is using that language to demonize them. And that's what we do. The, the Monroe Doctrine is that the US is the police of the Americas. Because the indigenous people in the Americas are incompetent. Well, yeah, that's, the Monroe Doctrine says that. We live by the mantra that we're better than everybody. It's why we're so afraid of China. We're afraid of any country that does what's right. China had it right about population. Thirty years ago, China said, we're gonna have only as many children as we have adults for a while because population of the earth is growing too big and it's unsustainable. So for about fifteen years, they had two children for each fam- couple. And then, because people wanted sons, they were killing their daughters. So that they said, well, we're gonna stop that, we're only gonna have one child. Because then you should love your child enough not to kill them. And what did the US do? They said, oh, it's evil, we have to have more children, we have to populate, we have, we need a generation to work. They don't care for the children. They don't care for the children, you know?
You are there to work.
So many, yeah, well, you know, the number of children who end up in foster care because they've been taken away from abusive parents is obscene. And very few people survive the foster care system emotionally healthy. Very few. And then we've taken them away from their parents, we've handed them to someone off to, to raise till they're eighteen, then they're booted out. They're out, that's it. They're not helping you find jobs, they're not helping you get housed. If you struggle in your education, well, it ain't our fault, no one's paying for your college. Your parents don't want you back, they got rid of you.
Also, I think, also, I think that they've figured out that children are not, having children are not really particularly good for the economy until they're old enough to work. Because
Right.
it takes, you know, like a parent out of the workforce, but also like, even like the consumer economy, like, I, um, I just saw an article yesterday about, it was titled something like, this is what, what your life could be like if your kids didn't play sports all weekend long. And it was an article all about like trying to get parents to take their kids out of, you know, structured activities on the weekend so that they can go out and go to restaurants and bars and go on weekend vacations. And I read this article and I was first of all, completely disgusted because it's like, wow, like, you're so selfish that you'd rather go to a bar than take your kid to their T-ball game or whatever. But then I, it clicked that this was a push to get people to get back into the consumer economy even more because you're spending too much time having quality time with your kids. You know, at their youth sports or whatever they do on the weekend. You're spending too much time on that, that doesn't bring value to, you know, corporate donors and corporations and, you know, the leisure payment industry. So I think that, I think that children are just not really good for the people that make the most money, even as expensive as they are. It's really, they really, really don't contribute to the economy until they're old enough to, uh, to work.
And then spend money.
And spend money themselves, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's the continuous child labor push that we have now. You know, the first step was nobody wants to work and we can't get anybody to apply to these jobs. Okay, well, you don't want to work, so let's have your kids work.
Right.
Yeah.
And then there's, that's also part of the push against LGBT.
Yeah.
How can people have mates who are the same gender? Because then we don't have children.
Children.
We need more children. We don't have enough houses to house them allegedly, but.
Never mind adoption or foster care.
Yeah. Right, right. So, you know, the, their LGBT are not accepted because they love someone that they're not supposed to.
Yeah, did you hear MTG the other day? She was criticizing somebody in Congress, saying that she wasn't a mother because she's a stepmom.
And, yeah, I hate that, I hate that attitude too.
And it's like the same thing, it's what I was just, same thing is what I was just talking about too, like, it, you know, if you're an adopted parent, you're seen as like lesser of a parent. Because you're not a biological parent and that's just bullshit.
Yeah, I agree.
It, it's, it's really sad, it's really sad, but then, you know, that goes back to whether or not we as a society are able to make a tru- contract or make a commitment. You know? The, having children is a lifelong commitment, but so is marriage. You people get married and then first kid comes and then she's paying too much attention to the kid, not me, so I leave her for the secretary. You know, that's, that's BS. But who suffers? The child.
Yeah.
This is all because of the Patriot Act, I'll say that. The descent when, it is though, the descent into division and fighting and, and oppression in, in the streets by people who are not police. That's the brown shirts rising up. And the Patriot Act gave power to, to authorities to do that.
Yeah, I guess the, just the last thing I'll say is, I actually was just thinking about Portland. Because there's this narrative among right wingers that, you know, Portland has just become this dangerous place. Never mind the fact that a big reason for that is because of all the Proud Boys and right wing organizations that came into the city to intentionally be combative towards Antifa and anybody that represented a left wing group.
Right, and, and they moved there during the George Floyd protests and never moved out.
Yeah.
Yep. They've gotten stronger.
That's the racist, yeah, that's the racist, horrific failure to recognize that humans are humans.
Never mind the fact.
No matter who they love, no matter how they live, they're human beings.
Yeah, and Oregon was also set up to be a white only colony as late as the seventies. So that's, of course, baked into the fabric of systemic racism that's going on in all this.
That's right. People who didn't like all the blacks moving into California after World War Two and having children and living here and surviving and doing well, went north.
Well, also, well, also, I mean, we like to think that we are, you know, in a little bubble here in California, but we're not. I mean, a lot of people here in California even are from, think about it, like Great Depression, they come from the south and they have a lot, they came to, to, I think about this all the time when I hear people talk about, you know, the Hispanic community taking our jobs. They're, they think that because they actually came here, you know, to pick in the fields themselves decades ago, right, during the Great Depression? None of them would work those jobs now, of course, but it's still there, it's still like, they still own it, right? Um, and I think, I think that even here in California, in our little bubble, it is, it's going on, you just have to look around, you know, get your head out of the sand and look around a little bit and you see it. You see it everywhere.
Well, the, the anti Latino rhetoric also has been expanded widely in the state of California since the year two thousand, because more and more Latino people have earned PhDs. So now they're educators, they're teachers, they're politicians, they're powerful businessmen. Yeah, doctors, so that, that racist undercurrent
Yeah.
resents that. And that's why they say, you know, go home, go home. I, they came in, they came and fought in World War One, directly from Mexico, to join the armed forces. You know, for us, so they were allowed to stay because of that. They have three generations of citizens, you know?
Maybe the three of us could work, I was gonna say, the three of us should work together on a future episode about the Precero Program.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, good idea.
But yeah, Liz, go ahead.
We have many future e- episodes in us.
Absolutely, yes. Liz, go ahead and, go ahead and plug your socials, how can people get in touch with you and what do you have going on in your life?
Okay, well, I have a Facebook page, Liz Campos. I have a couple of Instagram pages. Um, Liz Campos for Ventura, uh, Liz Campos, she/her, and, uh, let's see. Never Again is Now. Those are my Instagrams and I have a Twitter account, which I think right now is called Liz Campos.
Gotta follow you.
Maybe Liz Campos for Ventura Twitter. Ask Randall, he knows them all.
Our good friend at the Ventura Tide Pod.
Yeah, I also think we, we just need to, um, meet in the streets a lot more. You know, I'm downtown a lot on Saturdays, I'm usually outside Palermo from nine to twelve. Then I go up to the EP Foster Library for a while. Sundays, I'm here at the Avenue Library for a couple hours, so just catch me anywhere. Call out, hey Liz, and I'll stop and spend time with you.
I gotta, I gotta introduce you to some of my Antifa friends.
Oh, absolutely. I want to meet everybody, I want to meet everybody. Well, I don't want to meet Donald Trump, but.
Everyone that I, everyone that I would recommend to you, right?
Yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go.
As always, the eight oh five uncensored podcast is on all the major social media platforms, we're on Instagram, YouTube, uh, et cetera, we're also on TikTok. If you have any questions, comments, guest ideas or episode suggestions, shoot us an email, we'd love to hear from you. It's eight oh five uncensored at gmail dot com. Thanks, everybody, have a great night, morning, evening, wherever you're listening in the world and stay safe out there. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you.